Okay, we now come to order. Please stand for the pledge of agents, our pledge of agents.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of our which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, gentlemen, do you call roll, please?
Councilmember Erby?
Here.
Councilmember Page?
Here.
Councilmember Wassinger?
Here.
Councilmember Omera?
Here.
Councilmember Dolan?
Here.
Sixth council district seat is Bacon. Councilmember Harder?
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a forum.
I move for approval of the Journal, the meeting of January 20, 2015.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communication.
Mr. Chair, there are no tax compromises or zoning matters this evening, so I move to road and bridge matters. Under road and bridge matters, item number one, second district.
Receive file, plan specifications, and detailed estimate of cost to be approved, and the acting director of procurement be authorized to advertise for bids pending federal highway admission authorization as requested, and a copy of this report be sent to the interested parties.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number two, third and sixth districts.
Receive file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number three, sixth district.
Please hold, and that will be the order.
Mr. Chair, moving on to other communications. Item number one.
Receive and file the same motion for our item number two, and that will be the order.
Item number three, seventh district.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number four, sixth district.
Receive and file, and that will be the order. Please read the add-ons.
Item number one, all districts.
Receive file, and appointment be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
Okay, that will be the order. I'm sorry. Motion carries, and that will be the order.
Item number two, all districts.
Receive file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number three, first district. Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number four, first district.
Receive file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number five.
Receive and file, and that will be the order. For the county executive?
Sure. I want to report that tomorrow's staff members from the St. Louis County Office of Community Empowerment will meet with the St. Louis Economic Development Partnership to discuss tangible assistance that we can offer business owners in the Ferguson-Dellwood area. The empowerment office has visited several businesses since the beginning of the year, and they have compiled a list of concerns to be addressed, including loans for rebuilding, replacing broken windows, and tearing down burned-out buildings. To date, our Department of Human Services has dispersed $240,000 in relief to Ferguson and Dellwood through the United Way, which was, of course, a measure that was passed through the council. That money has been spent on rental and mortgage assistance in addition to utility payments. The next phase of county relief begins February 21st, when we will be offering financial aid to the employees of the businesses affected by the events in Ferguson. And we also plan on waiving penalties for real estate tax payments that are late, which is, in accordance with state statute, the relief that we're able to provide in that area. Nothing further.
Thank you, county executive. For the special committees. There are no reports to special committees this evening. We will move to public forum. How many speakers, Ken?
We have six speakers this evening, Mr. Chair.
Your name will be called. When your name is called, you please come up and speak. We will keep the comments to three minutes, please. In the past, we've had some outbursts in the audience. We'd appreciate for consideration of the rest of the audience and those speaking, if you would refrain from that. And also, I hate to have to do it, but I have to remind people we would not tolerate profanity. Our respect to the rest of the crowd here, so. First speaker, please.
Mary Wersh. This is for Mr. Stenger. Seven days ago, I was at the Martin Luther King Ceremony at the Old Courthouse. I was, I like going to that ceremony every year. I think it is the premier platform for local leaders, and it is a testament to the values that we all aspire to. You and Mayor Slay were on the program, but neither one of you showed up. I'd like to know why you didn't show up.
And I don't know if you were the author who wrote the, I guess you were the person who wrote the article to the Post-Dispatch. We may have appeared, and I can't answer for Mayor Slay, but I can answer for myself. We may have appeared on a program, but my office did not receive any formal invite to that event whatsoever, so.
That, excuse me, I really do dispute that as a point of fact, but in any case, in any case, you should seek that platform.
Well, I have to ask you this. You just pointed, you dis, I guess you're disagreeing with it as a matter of fact. Are you the person who sent out the invitations for that event?
No, I'm not.
Well, in order to dispute it as a matter of fact, I think that would be the most appropriate thing, but I will tell you, I did not receive an invitation to the event.
Well, I'm saying that regardless of whether or not you received an invitation, it's a plat, you should be there, and the mayor should also be there.
But how would I be there if I didn't receive an invitation?
You need to seek out an invitation. This, you know, I know I don't need to point out to you that we've had five and a half months of crises, racial crises, in this area, and this is a time now that is full of opportunity for positive change. And I'm here to tell you, obviously, I'm white and middle-class, but I want to tell you that our regional leaders represent all of the people, and you have an obligation now to step up. And here's where it starts. I'm older than you are, and I can tell you, this is what I've learned. Number one, you listen. You listen to all parts of your community. Number two, you learn from your mistakes, you admit when you're wrong, and you step up to the challenges. You respect different parts of the community. And when you come to an office such as you sought, you look for opportunities. That ceremony at the Old Courthouse every year is a platform, and this year, a particular opportunity, and you missed it.
And I would tell you, I completely agree with everything that you are saying, but we were not invited. Had I been invited, I would have gladly attended. Although you're saying that my name was listed on the program, I can tell you, we were not invited. Had I been invited, I would have attended. We have no means or mechanism in county government to seek out events. People invite us to events, and we either attend or don't, and that is an event that I would have been happy to attend, but I wasn't invited. But I agree with everything you're saying.
All right, well, good. I'm glad to hear it. And let me say that going forward, we are, everyone, all voters are watching. We want you and the other people on this council to look for opportunities, step up, listen, and respect, and we want some action. This is a time that is full of potential. We don't need leaders who are AWOL.
Sure, well, I can understand what you're saying, but please know this. We attended multiple, I attended multiple events related to the Martin Luther King celebration of his life, and I attended those events because we were invited to those events.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Ashley Bernal.
I'll make sure I do things, a few things different tonight.
Good evening.
When I was a kid in school, I was always taught by my teachers to break down words, and so tonight, I thought I'd break down a word for you. The word is politics. Now, if you've been around the block on this one, follow with me. So you break down the word "politics" into two words, right? Poly, meaning?
Many.
Many. And tics, being blood-sucking creatures. Not a pretty one, right? But what we learned by breaking things down is sometimes we pull the ugly right out of things, but I think politics can be changed. Politics can be educated. It can be broken down, and it can be built back up. What does not need to be happening in today's society is an us versus them. It's not an anti-cop, it's pro-accountability. It's not anti-politics, it's not anti-me versus you, it's anti-inaction. It's anti-not caring. I want you to care. I want you to understand, and I want you to feel as hurt when you drive by Teddy Bear memorials as I do. I want you to understand what it looks like to a community to know that your family, if they are not riding in the same car as you, may not return home. I want you to know what it looks like and feels like to be a mom that has an African-American son, that has an African-American husband, and know that their lives are potentially in danger. Even if they're not being gunned down in the streets, they are in danger because they may not succeed in school, they may not excel because of the creation of the politics that has constrained our community. Now, many of you know that I am not originally from St. Louis, I'm not a St. Louis native. 2013, I brought, was come, I had come to this city seeking big-city life from the state of Kentucky. I was really shocked and appalled to find that I had somehow moved to the state of Mississippi in the 1960s instead of to the big, booming metropolis of St. Louis that I'd always heard about growing up in Indiana. So tonight, I want to talk just a few things, and my, gosh, one minute left, about rules. I think it's important to honor rules, and I certainly apologize for it being forcibly removed last week. That was certainly not my intent. But I do not back down from the idea that we have to enforce the rules, and when there's time on the clock, I think it's allowed to the speaker to be able to make sure that those rules, and that they own that time. Secondly, I think it's really important that when people bring up issues of misconduct or rule violations in here, like sunshine laws were discussed, there was no mention of that, and there's not a way to make sure the audience can enforce those rules and make sure that everybody here is abiding. Next, I think it's really important that we have debate, to have clash. We don't know where your policies are because you've given us basically nothing. Mr. Stenger, this is the first time I've heard any rebuttal from this area, and Mr. Omera, this is the very first time I've been able to see you while I was speaking, and I'm very happy to hear that since I'm from Florissant. And I'm really happy about that opportunity, that we can change these things. You all have the power to change these kinds of things.
Thank you. I've been here many times when you spoke.
Next speaker is Tom Sullivan.
Mr. Chairman, members of the council, I have a few things to mention. First, I'm glad the contract for the county health center in Pine Lawn did not go forward. There were many things about it that did not add up. Also, there's been a lot of complaints from Ferguson businesspeople lately who are in trouble due to the physical and financial damage their businesses have endured. They don't think county executive Stenger and county government are doing enough. I've asked Mr. Stenger to talk about the county's response, and I'm glad that he has. Also, I'm requesting that bill number seven be held until it can be explained further why a $725,000 increase, nearly 35%, is needed for the contract that RSCC Consultants has with the Emergency Communications Committee. Such a large increase deserves scrutiny and raises questions whether it should be a separate contract. It is essentially a no-bid, no-request contract. I've read the January 8, 2015 letter from Chief John Velmore concerning a request. It does not answer the relevant questions. What's missing about the proposed increases or figures? How many people are working on the project? What is their hourly charge? How and when was the $2,200,000 amount reached? How is the additional $725,000 figured? Also, it isn't clear if the additional funding is for the future work or for some work that's already been done. In 2011, when county executive Stenger was council chair, a sole-source contract for $82.5 million was approved for the Emergency Communications Commission by the council with no debate. What is the status of that contract? How many other large contracts are there in effect? What's the current balance sheet for the ECC? We don't know the answer to any of these questions. And now, there is a request for another contract for the commission for $15.6 million owing, and supposed to be hurried through. There's been no shortage of problems with the emergency systems. Two months ago, the outdoor sirens failed to sound. A year ago, they sounded when they weren't supposed to. In October, there were problems between the ECC and central dispatching. In the last few years, there's been a lot of controversy about contracts in county government. A big part of county executive Stenger's campaign last year was his promise to make county government more efficient. He also pledged to immediately require an outside forensic audit of the entire county government. Approving $725,000 for a contract, when it isn't known for sure what it's to accomplish and why it costs so much, would be inconsistent with those promises. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Next speaker is James McGee.
Mr. Chair, county executive, council council, my name is James McGee, the mayor of the city of Anita Park. I just want to say, I got so many calls from our senior citizens in the Anita Park area, and they voted for you, Mr. Stenger, and they really were disappointed at the decision that was made on last, last week, because those seniors do not have vehicles, and it could have been my mother, your mother, your grandmother, your grandfather, that need help, care, and that's something that our seniors have to really look at really closely. We had a senior citizen that had a heart attack. So happened they had a medical person right there on the scene, but they had to take him to St. Mary's. But if that health center at Page Dale in Ferguson, if you ought to have kept that contract, that senior citizen would have been able to go there. They don't have vehicles like we have. They don't fix income. They need that area. We always talking about helping the poor? We went up to Jeff City just last week, and they was talking about the poor. Poor, help the poor, help the poor. This is an opportunity for you to do the right thing. Please look at that contract. Think about those senior citizens that do not have cars. They have two senior citizen building right in that area. That's a primary for those senior citizens to go get healthcare. You think about, we all gonna get old one day, and this is a seed for us to plant right now to help those seniors, to help those young people. That's a counseling center right there. Those young people now are killing each other. Why? Because they don't have jobs. They don't have the opportunity that other people have. We have to reach out and help those. We have a Boys and Girls Club on Martin Luther King Day when they did community service to help the seniors, to help them. Some of them don't have money to pay their bills. We have what we call a bread thing right there at City Hall. They come there on Monday and Friday and get bread. Sometime, we have to take that to them. So what I want you all to do, look at this and really step back and look at it closely, because this is an opportunity for us to do the right thing, and that's to reverse the decision that was made on last week. Thank you so much.
Mayor, can I ask you, Mayor? May I ask you, Mayor?
Sure.
Mayor?
Yes.
With respect to the seniors in the area surrounding this facility, what are you proposing would provide transportation to bring them to the facility that was contemplated?
Well, we have a bus, but you have to understand, a lot of them do not have transportation.
No, I understand that, but what, how were you, what were you proposing would bring them to the facility that was contemplated? So in order to, from their homes to the facility, they would need some kind of transportation regardless, no matter how close it was, right?
Well, they can call a ride, but the thing about it, they don't even have the money.
Well, and that's sort of our point. Our point was that with respect to call or ride, call or ride can bring them quite literally 1.9 miles away to our, we have a $20 million facility that has a 40% no-show that is quite literally 1.9 miles away, and call or ride could either bring them to the facility that was contemplated, or it could bring them literally right down the road. And as far as mass transit goes, there's mass transit that provides service from the contemplated facility in Page Dale every 45 minutes to our $20 million facility just down the road, and that's where I think the council's decision was sort of coming from. And that's why I asked about the transportation.
Sure, I can understand that too, but if you have a heart attack, and most seniors have problems, you want to get your parents to the closest facilities that would take care of them. Also, our young people that are shooting and killing each other, they need counseling, and some of them is mentally disturbed.
Well, and I can understand that, and part of our thinking, part of the council's thinking, part of my thinking, was in communicating with our director of health for acute care like that. That's really something that's best suited to an emergency room as opposed to the facility that was contemplated. It would, I mean, I don't think that you would bring a heart attack patient to the facility that was contemplated. You actually take them to, you know, you take them to the emergency room.
Well, we have social services there too. I'm not going to sit up and debate that, but the thing about it.
But we have those same, we have those same services available, quite literally, just 1.9 miles down the road, and we have bus routes that are running every 45 minutes.
But that's an opportunity to build up a community. We saying, bring ourselves up by our own bootstraps. Is this an opportunity to have a health center, a counseling center, a movie theater, a shopping area right there?
But, and the shopping area and the movie theater is not going to be affected by whether there's basically, you know, this medical facility there.
I understand that, but to make our community strong and have a stronger community, we have to have education, help, and that's an opportunity to do that. And my thing is, if, let's respect one another. Come talk to the mayors in that area. Talk to the people with the boots on the ground in that area, so you all can get educated, because you all are not out there. The constituents not calling you like they do us. So if you take the opportunity and respect those in that community, and we was up there in Jeff City, and they totally disrespect, and that's one thing, we got to learn to work together. See, because personal biases, and our own personal bias can cause us to make mistakes and make the wrong decision. We're all human beings. And like I said, it could have been my grandmother, your grandmother, your mother. I want them to get the best healthcare possible, and soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next speaker is Susan Clark.
Good evening, council members. My voice isn't any better this week than it was last week. I wanted to tell you why I became involved with Ferguson and the Ferguson protesters. I'd like to say it was over police issues. It wasn't. It was over First Amendment rights. It was over freedom of speech and over the rights of people with grievances to be heard. After watching the protests and watching the police response to the protests for weeks, it became intolerable to me that people weren't allowed to speak. You know, holding a pumpkin in Clayton ought not be an arrestable offense. It was one of many incidents. So last week, when I very much wanted to be here to allow both myself to speak, but also to allow the other marvelous young men and women that I've come to know speak, I was offended when my three minutes could not be shared with people whose voices I think you need to hear. I understand your roles. I appreciate that tonight, there's been a little bit of flexibility in them and some dialogue. Thank you. I'd ask you to reconsider those roles. I think listening to the people who have taken the time to come here, and frankly, 6 o'clock is not the easiest time to get here if you're working. I'm privileged in so many ways. I was able to take the 45 minutes to get here through the traffic this evening. If you work downtown, or you work in West County, you're not going to get here by 5:58 to get signed up, many, many weeks. So if those of us who do get here early are willing to share our time, I would hope you would be willing to listen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Christine Hendricks.
I was one of the people who was so egregiously denied the right to be able to come up here and speak, and I am one of those people who works downtown. I have three young sons, three black young sons, whose lives are very much important to me, which is why I do what I do. I work a full-time job, and I do a lot in the community, so getting here is very hard for me. I'm sure you wouldn't understand that, Mr. Stenger, but it is. I have to get my kids home, I have to get them some dinner, and then I have to try to get down here by 5:58, and when I was here just a little late, I was denied my right to speak. Now, when I came here last time, it was with a list of 10 demands that I would have loved to have been heard, because I felt like they were so important, because they were part of the four-mile SEO Watch Walk that we did in Ferguson, which you might not have been invited to, but hey, it's a free country, and you could have just showed up. So when I say that, it's to say that I wasn't allowed to speak last time and say those demands, so I just decided that I don't want to demand anything of you. I don't want to ask you for anything, because as the lady said who was leaving here, when you didn't, when you stripped that $300,000 for that health center in North County, she said you are heartless. And she said you are heartless, and you don't care, and if you don't care, then why should I get up here and ask you to care? See, what you don't understand, Mr. Stenger, is that people are poor. Call or ride is like $8, and $8 for you, and maybe even $8 for me, isn't a big deal, but when you live in poverty and every penny counts, $8 means a lot. It means a lot. And so, in the words of Asada Shakur, "The people are our only appeal. We are the ones who can free ourselves." So I will not get up here and ask you for anything. These fine people might, and they can do that, but I won't, because I'm going to do something else. I'm going to take it to the people, and I will use every ounce, every ounce of people power that I have collected from being out in the streets of Ferguson, meeting with the finest people you will ever meet in your whole entire life. And I will get with those people, and we will, we will get money together, and we will go to whatever ever district you reside in, and we will make sure, I don't care if they're a Libertarian, a Green Party, a Democrat, or a Republican, you can be replaced. You will be replaced if you do not respond to the people who come before you each and every week and ask you. And to Councilwoman, Councilwoman Hazel Erby, who represents my district with distinction, I ask, and I only of you, you are the only person on this panel that I would ever ask anything of, and the one thing that I ask you is that you always resist, and that you always be the voice of reason, and that you always monitor and make sure that these people understand what goes on in your district and the people that you represent. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
That concludes the public forum. We move to introduction of bills.
Bill number 17, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of $9,4,417 from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. Appropriating the same for housing and supportive services, authorizing the county executive to execute necessary contracts. Bill number 18, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Studio D Marketing Communications LLC for creative and graphic design services for the solid waste management program. Bill number 19, introduced by Councilmember Omera, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with H&amp;Y Corporation for lease of space at 3801 Bell Avenue for Police Precinct Substation. Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, and ordinance providing for the vacation of 12 Bridge Pier Easements for the original Forest Park Expressway, petitioner, the Washington University. Bill number 21, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, an emergency ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with General Dynamics Information Technology Incorporated for design, provision, installation, testing, cutover, and support/maintenance services for next-generation 911 dispatch centers, authorizing execution of related documents, and declaring an emergency. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
The correct bill.
Bill number eight, introduced by Councilmember Omera.
Hold please. Bill number eight is held.
Bill number 231, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Please hold. Bill number 231. Bill number 231 is held.
Bill number three, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger. Hold please.
Bill number three is held.
Bill number nine, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move to perfect bill number nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number nine perfected.
Bill number 10, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move to perfect bill number 10.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number Ten is perfected.
Bill Number Eleven, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move to perfect Bill Number Eleven. Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number Eleven is perfected.
Bill Number Twelve, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move to perfect. Twelve, I'm sorry. I move to perfect Bill Number Twelve. Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number Twelve is perfected.
Bill Number Thirteen, introduced by Councilmember Wessinger. I move to perfect Bill Number Thirteen.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number Thirteen is perfected.
Bill Number Fourteen, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move to perfect Bill Number Fourteen. Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number Fourteen is perfected.
Bill Number Fifteen, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move to perfect Bill Number Fifteen. Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number Fifteen is perfected.
Bill Number Sixteen, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move to perfect Bill Number Sixteen.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill Number Sixteen is perfected. Final passage of bills, please.
Bill Number Two Sixty-Three, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
Please hold.
Bill Number Two Sixty-Three is held.
Substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Two Ninety-Five, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move for final passage of substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Two Ninety-Five. Second. Please call a roll.
Councilmember Erby.
On this bill, I requested information from the administration, from County Executive Stinger, and I didn't receive anything back that answered my questions regarding this bill. Since I've been on the council, I've never seen that happen before. Usually, when the council people ask for clarification, they get it. I did not get that, so I abstain.
If I may respond, we did provide you a letter. We provided it directly to your council office, answering all of your questions that were asked. So I disagree with your assertion.
When was that?
I think we did it today. We gathered the information and provided it to you today.
You think?
We provided it to you today.
That's not true. I want you all to know that. That happens a lot in this administration. But anyway, I abstain.
Well, hold on. Let's clarify this.
I didn't receive anything.
I've got members of my administration here today. Do we have a copy of the letter here? Or could we provide a...
I needed it by 5:00 yesterday was what I requested it. And who am I speaking with? I don't see you. Jackie, did we get a letter?
Was the letter, was the letter received by your office or not? Did you receive the letter?
That's the first time. I've been here 10 years. I've never experienced that before.
I disagree with you on that, Hazel.
I didn't ask you, Mike. I'm talking to Steve.
All right, we have a roll call.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wessinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair... I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I substitute Bill Number One for Bill Number Two Ninety-Five. There are five ayes and one abstention.
Substitute Bill for Number One, Bill Number One for Bill Number Two Ninety-Five is finally passed.
Bill Number Five, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Five. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wessinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill Number Five, there are six ayes.
Bill Number Five is finally passed.
Bill Number Six, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Six. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wessinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill Number Six, there are six ayes.
Bill Number Six is finally passed.
Bill Number Seven, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Seven. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
No.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wessinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill Number Seven, there are five ayes and one no.
Bill Number Seven is finally passed.
Bill Number Eight, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move for final passage of Bill Number Eight. Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby.
No.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wessinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill Number Eight, there are five ayes and one no.
Bill Number Eight is finally passed.
Moving on to resolutions, Mr. Chair. We have one this evening. Resolution Number One, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move, I'm sorry. I move for adopting the resolution number one.
Second. Please call a roll.
Councilmember Erby.
Aye.
Councilmember Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Wessinger.
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Resolution Number One, there are six ayes.
Resolution Number One is adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Chair. Item Number One, Fourth District.
Got from the order of business. Motion carries.
Item Number Two, Second District.
Please hold. So ordered.
Item Number Three, First District. Item Number Three is the motion to receive file in the county council and be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
Yeah, okay. We already have it, so. It was on there last week.
The motion was to receive file in the county council and prepare the appropriate legislation, Mr. Chair. And, Mr. Chair, moving on to new business, we have three prepared orders this evening.
Prepare adoption of orders one, two, and three. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Orders one, two, and three are adopted.
I move, we turn.
Second. Any opposed? Now it's adopted. So ordered. Done.